Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 11, 2021 City Council Work Session. And I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster? Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present at this time. I don't have, I have a few comments, but I'm not going to make many tonight. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Griffin and his, his young teen to give us some instructions. But I would like to share one particular thing, and that is the Oconee Center Behavioral Services, they are having a construction-ready training class, and it's going to be held over off of Archit Hill Road. And they will be holding it starting, well, the 17th is the deadline for you to register for this particular job-ready training. And so they're asking the city if we would partner just to show support of them hosting this skill trade training class. And I shared with him that I would bring it before council tonight, that I'm pretty sure we wouldn't have a problem with that. We try to support anything that's going to benefit the community and help to expand our economic base as we go forward and grow back to hopefully pre-COVID state a little bit better. And so all they need from us is just a little of support, supporting the effort that they're making in order to have this over at the old Sally Davis School. It's off Archit Hill Road. And I think it's going to be like a 20-day or plus training. Don't have everything I need to have because I wasn't able to attend the session on Monday. And so as I get everything else, I forward it to you guys so that we can hopefully go ahead and give them a letter of support. As with many other areas that are trying to do the job-ready training, I know with Mr. Cow at Central State, you know, they're looking at different organizations trying to make sure that we can partner with them as well to move along some training, to get people back to work. And at the end of the day, that's, I think, everybody's goal is wanting to get people back to work. As I stated, I do have a few more comments, but I walked out enough of those. So I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor to you, Mr. Griffin. And if you want to, go ahead and bring your group up.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I shared with you all back in January, well, let me back up even a little bit more. Dr. Grace Bagwell-Adams, who is Assistant Dean of Outreach and Engagement and Equity at the College of Public Health at UGA, was on one of our GMA COVID calls one Tuesday morning. And I don't know, I guess maybe I might say unfortunately for her, towards the end of that call, she mentioned that the Public Health College at UGA was looking at doing a Health Equities Fellows Program. And I didn't hardly let her get off the Zoom call before I emailed her and told her that the city of Milledgeville would be interested in doing that. What were some things that had been done in the past? And she said, "It's a brand-new program, so I can't tell you anything that's been done in the past, but we will, we will keep your information available." And fortunately, they did. I got an email from her and from Becky Taylor with GMA. And I shared with you all about mid-January that we had been chosen to be one of the five pilot communities for this Health Equity Fellows Program. And I was very excited about it. I have become even more excited about it as I have had the opportunity over the last three months to work with our student as well as the faculty members that have been a part of this program. Grace, thank you so much for making us a part of this program. She is with us on Zoom. And we'll give you the opportunity to say anything when Carlencia gets finished that you'd like. We also have with us Dr. Janani Tappa, the Assistant Professor in the College of Public Health at UGA, who was our Health Fellows Faculty Mentor. And the, the star of the hour is our Health Fellow student, Ms. Carlencia McDowell. I first met with Carlencia and Janani, I think it was around early February. I said, "What are we going to do?" They said, "You tell us." I threw a question out there, and they took it and ran with it. And I want to tell you what the question was. The question was, "Was there any data anywhere that showed that we may have in Baldwin County a higher incidence of criminal activity based on mental health due to us having had Central State Hospital here?" And they took that and ran with it. They put together some data elements. Carlencia did her presentation about two weeks ago to the faculty and the other four cities that were part of this pilot program. And I asked her if she would come share that data with you tonight. The project is not finished. We may have the opportunity to have Carlencia again in some future semesters in an internship program.
Ms. Denise, we can hear you. Can you mute your phone?
We may have the opportunity to have some additional students. Hopefully, I'm going to have the opportunity to work some more with Dr. Tappa on some other questions that we have that have kind of come from this question. But with that, let me introduce to you Ms. Carlencia McDowell, our Health Equities Fellow for this semester. She's going to share with you the data that she has rounded up and then tell us what our next steps are. And after she gets finished, Janani and Grace, I'd like to give you all the opportunity to share anything with, with Mayor and Council that you would like to. So Carlencia, I'm about to pull up your presentation, and the floor is yours.
Perfect. Thank you. That was a great introduction. I appreciate it.
Are you surprised that I can talk?
Not at all. Just not at all.
Your presentation is up.
Okay. Perfect. Well, greetings and good evening. I am Carlencia McDowell, a first-year Master of Public Health candidate, concentrating on health policy and management along with a certificate in disaster management at University of Georgia. I also participated as a Spring 2021 Health Equity Fellow, and I'll be presenting to you today on the importance of health equity within rural Georgia, and I am focusing on the historic city of Milledgeville. Next slide, please. So just an overview of what we're going to be talking about, just some basic facts about Milledgeville, Central State Hospital and its importance, some project goals that we had, county comparisons, the two sources that we use, observations, and next steps that we want to take. Next slide, please. So here's a little overview of Milledgeville, a city known as the First Lady of Georgia and was once the capital for a little over 60 years. Milledgeville is located in the middle of Georgia in Baldwin County, and some demographics of the city include a population estimate of 44,823, and a fairly diverse community with 52.4% being non-Hispanic white, 42.2% being non-Hispanic black, 2.2% being Hispanic, and 1.7% being Asian. Also, there is a median household income estimated at about $42,700, and there's an estimated 41.2% of persons in the community below poverty level. Next slide, please. Within UGA's College of Public Health Equity Fellowship, our mission is to observe health inequity within our cities and with the assistance of the city manager, understand what the community needs. Health equity ensures that everybody in the community has the knowledge, skill set, and resources to achieve optimal health. There is a need for mental health knowledge and services within Milledgeville, which is marginally due to the Central State Hospital closing. Central State Hospital, as you know, is a prominent landmark in Milledgeville, and the Jones Building served as a general hospital, offering medical care to patients at Central State as well as residents in Milledgeville and the surrounding area. Due to the closing a little more than five years ago, those in Milledgeville who need care lack effective services, and some end up homeless. In turn, when those with serious mental illnesses are in distress, the police are called. Next slide, please. Mr. Hank Griffin, the city manager, wanted to understand a baseline of the community health, in particular, what the city can do to not have a large population of individuals getting incarcerated due to mental health issues, and also what methods can be used to help them. With this in mind, we look to see where Baldwin County stood health-wise compared to other counties in Georgia. So far, with my fellowship advisor's guidance, I have developed four comparison data sets and three reports about the current state of Baldwin County. We aim to utilize this data to locate counties within, with health initiatives that can be applicable to Milledgeville. Our goal is that the end product will remove mental health barriers in the area and in turn decrease the rate of those with serious mental illnesses getting incarcerated. Next slide, please. So overall, we observed a total of 14 different Georgia counties. To the left, you can see a map word. I initially looked at the counties surrounding Baldwin, but then I noticed they weren't comparable due to having different population sizes, racial demographics, and resources. Therefore, we looked at similar populated counties within Georgia, which included Coffey, Thomas, Haverisham, and Colquitt. And also, due to Mr. Hank working with McDuffie and Spalding, he wanted to look in those areas to see if there was anything that was comparable. And then also Towns County, because it's similar to Milledgeville as a college community. Next slide. So the first source that we used was the county health rankings, and it was used to provide a snapshot of the observed community's health and a starting point of where change can manifest in the community. Next slide. To the left, you will see the data that I collected from this source that was included in the reports to Mr. Hank. So that includes demographics, social and economic factors, health outcomes, health factors, behaviors, the clinical care and services, and residential segregation. And to the right is the model used in the county health rankings, and it shows how the categories were initially grouped. Next slide. So presented here, I just wanted to show you some of the health outcome rankings. And it's important to note that these rankings are out of 159 counties. So the first one is the overall health outcome ranking, which reflects the physical as well as the mental well-being of residents. The second is the length of life, and it refers to how long people in the community live. And the third ranking is quality of life, and it refers to how healthy people feel while they are alive. And this one is vital to note because this category underscores the importance of physical, social, mental, as well as the emotional well-being from birth to adulthood of residents. As we can see, the rankings in Baldwin County pretty much fall in the middle, so that means that the above counties might be ones to observe. Continue, please. So some key findings I would like to report is that out of the 44,000 estimated population within Milledgeville, about 1 in 4 individuals reported having poor or fair health. 1 in 7, or about 14%, reported having frequent physical as well as mental distress. And then lastly, 1 in 4 individuals or 25% reported being physically inactive. This is important because mental as well as physical health closely relate to each other. Next slide. This graph displays the number of individuals less than 65 years old who reported being uninsured. It can be seen that 16% or for every six people, one person in Milledgeville reported being uninsured. If you look further at the graph, you can see this is similar throughout McDuffie, Spalding, and Thomas, Georgia. If you look at the rankings to the right, Baldwin came in third pertaining to clinical care and services. This means that it's doing fairly better than other counties, but if we want to look into other ones that might be beneficial, it would be Towns and Haverisham in this category. Next slide, please. So our second source that we looked into was a Georgia Student Health Survey, and it's an annual anonymous self-reported survey, and it's conducted by the Georgia Department of Education. And it can also be accessed on their webpage. Next slide, please. To the left listed are the categories of the data that's collected. Within this source, we use demographics, peer, and adult support, school safety, suicide, and mental health statistics. The purpose of looking into this data is to provide a baseline of mental health conditions for younger individuals as recent mental health initiatives in the community have been targeted to Milledgeville's youth. Next slide, please. Overall, we saw that Milledgeville is far better than Spalding and McDuffie County in this one and on most questions within the survey. Therefore, it did not provide as much information as we initially hoped, but there were some statistics that was very interesting to review. Out of the 1,019 students of Baldwin High School, 1 in 4 individuals or 25% reported feeling unsafe at school or on their way to or from school. Another 1 in 4 students have been concerned about their physical safety while at school, and 2 out of 5 students reported not being treated fairly by the adults in their school. Next slide, please. When observing mental health, 1 in 7 students or 14% reported feeling depressed, sad, or withdrawn 1 or 2 days out of the month. 1 in 25 students reported experiencing intense anxiety, worries, or fears throughout all 30 days of the month. And overall, 1 in 5 students reported feeling some type of mental distress. Next slide, please. It can be observed based on the health county rankings that physical and mental health are closely related within Baldwin County, and also there is increased need for community access to health services. We saw that 36% of Baldwin County do not have access to exercise opportunity, and 14% of adults reported that more than half of the days in a month, but it's more than 14 days, they experienced poor physical and mental health. It is hoped that putting focus towards the community getting physically active will also increase their mental health. And then also, if we look at county rankings, it displayed the need for health professionals overall in the community. As one primary care physician is available to 1,800 residents, one mental health provider to 720 residents, and one primary care provider to 1,093 residents. Next slide, please. Based on the Georgia Student Health Survey, it's imperative to ensure that the mental health services provided to the students is culturally competent, meaning that it fits to everyone and that there is an understanding of everybody's culture and how it may differ when you approach them. As it can be seen, that 78.4% of the students that attend Baldwin High School are a part of a minority group. Also, we should increase adult social support within the school outside of just mental health professionals, as they play an important role in adolescent development as well as their mental well-being. Overall, existing school-based mental health initiatives should be evaluated to see what is working and where improvements can be made, as it was seen that 36.2 overall reported feeling depressed, sad, and withdrawn at some point throughout the month, and 20% of students experienced intense anxiety, worries, and fears that got in the way of their daily activities. Next slide. Our observations indicate that an immediate next step would be to do further research within the Georgia Student Health Survey report and utilize all the counties that was initially observed in the county health rankings report. This includes Haverisham, Towns, Thomas, Coffey, and Colquitt County. Since I last gave this presentation, I was able to pull this data. And from the findings, it increased our interest in adult support within the schools. Students' overall wellness, as it is affected by a family member or those in their environment who have been incarcerated or have had a serious mental illness. And lastly, identifying needs for students with disabilities are those who need special education. Short term, in about 3 to 6 months from now, the updated measurements will be examined to determine if there's a best practice that can be duplicated in Milledgeville, especially those relating to mental health and the decider factor on crimes committed or for those in incarceration. Long term, the goal is to implement police initiatives that focus on mental health and diversion programs for those with serious mental illnesses or those who are in need of care. An example of an initiative we observed is the Stepping Up Initiative, which is a national campaign that focuses on diverting individuals from mental illness, with mental illness from jail into treatment facilities. Next slide, please. Ultimately, a need for mental health services has been recognized within the Milledgeville area, and the goal of this, of this project is to eliminate barriers in order to improve the community's health and well-being while also aiming to decrease the number of individuals with serious mental illnesses getting incarcerated. It's imperative that we have the right services and provide a community with effective tools to support their health and well-being. Although I have not been to Milledgeville, Georgia, through Mr. Hank's vantage point, I have grasped a minute understanding of the diverse community and have analyzed methods to improve health equity. And through this, we aim to compare, observe, and gain information on initiatives that could best fit Milledgeville. Next slide, please. Overall, I can say I am completely grateful to have been a part of this inaugural cohort of this fellowship. I want to send a huge thank you to Ms. Becky Taylor and GMA, the coordinators of the fellowship, Dean Davis and Dr. Bagwell-Adams, and lastly, Mr. Hank Griffin and Dr. Tappa for trusting me to serve the Milledgeville community and working with me throughout this process. They have literally made this a remarkable one, and everybody on this list honestly have. And with this project, I just hope that we can bring awareness of mental health in Baldwin County and enhance the community's lives. And that is all for me. Thank you.
So now y'all see why I was so excited when we got Carlencia McDowell as our Health Fellow. When they did the presentations, when all five Health Fellows did their presentations earlier via a Zoom meeting, I made sure that everyone on there realized that we had the best. And I think you can see that, that we did. Anybody have any questions for Carlencia? A lot of that was trying to get a, trying to get a drink of water out of a fire hydrant, I know, but they're going to, they're going to take that information and massage it even more. And I'm fairly certain that we're going to have the opportunity to bend the ear of these people, at least for the next year, to, to come up with some concrete plans. But Carlencia, thank you so much for the hard work that you put in. We look forward to the possibility of maybe having you again in, in future semesters to help us through this process. Janani, would you like to add any words to Carlencia's or share anything with Mayor and Council?
Definitely, Mr. Hank. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And, you know, there is, there is, there is lots of words to define the opportunity that Milledgeville City has provided for, for our students and then to be a part of the inaugural, you know, Health Equity Fellow. And since Grace is here, I am sure Grace will talk about the fellows itself, but I just want to thank you all for your time, for Carlencia, for, for doing the work. It has been an absolute pleasure working directly with Mr. Hank and trying to see how we can use data that we currently already have to inform some of the groundwork that happens around our community. And it almost feels like with this work, we are only seeing, you know, are able to do this, a little bit, little bit tip of the iceberg. We definitely think how, thinking about how we can continue this work, you know, with Carlencia's role as an internship or for future Health Equity Fellow, you know, Grace will touch upon that, that our Health Equity Fellow may be with us for even longer period than one semester so that we can do more digging with data and how we can inform the decisions and what we can do from our end to make an informed decision on your end and how we can just bridge this research and service gap. So thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Grace, since you were the one that I worried to death to start with before we got this project started, please share some information with Mayor and Council.
I certainly will. I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of the College of Public Health. And to Hank, you've just been amazing. It is one of the best, greatest compliments when we have a partner who wants to continue to work with us. And I think that that is the most, the most exciting thing, is that Milledgeville as a city has been pleased enough to say, "Hey, let's keep doing this." We are piloting this project and this process. Most of our cities have asked us to kind of keep going. So what we are going to do next year is continue this program, expand it, have seven fellows instead of five. I am looking at ways to make it sustainable for the initial pilot cities that participated, and that will from, in the future, be a one-year project and program instead of just one semester, largely based on some of the feedback. So again, I just, I just want to thank you. I want to thank Milledgeville. It's a beautiful, wonderful place. One of the things I'm most excited about as we head into this post-vaccination frontier is that our fellows will have the chance to visit and to experience these cities firsthand because that is so critical. And as somebody who has been to Milledgeville several times and has enjoyed your beautiful city, I really just want our, our wonderful fellows to have the chance to see it and experience it firsthand. And so we look forward to that as well. But again, we're proud of Carlencia. We're grateful for Milledgeville. And, and again, I just want to say thank you to Hank. Your leadership has been incredible. I think it takes a lot of courage to jump in and say yes to something brand-new like this. So thank you for doing that. And thank you to the city and to the, to Mayor and Commission for also supporting the work. Again, we just look forward to working with you. I've seen many, many communities across the state of Georgia dealing with these issues around mental and behavioral health. I think it's the next public health challenge that's going to be, especially post-COVID, the thing that we have got to really focus on as a state and as local governments to intervene where we can. So thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing to work with y'all.
Thank you. We look forward to continuing to work with y'all, too. And Mayor and Council, any, any comments for these folks? I know that they'd love to stay around and hear us talk about our budget, but we will give them a chance to leave if they want to.
Mr. Griffin, I would like to say excellent presentation. Excellent presentation. Ms. Carlencia, maybe you need to come down and give me and Mr. Griffin a crash course in how to speak and not say "uh" every few minutes. Wonderful, wonderful job.
I'm surprised I did it myself. My nerves were bad. But thank you. I appreciate the compliment.
And to the rest of you all, and Mr. Griffin knows a whole lot more about the program, but he has updated us, and we're just looking forward to it as much needed here to get that feedback. So thank you.
I appreciate it.
What, I want to make one comment, and that is that if, if we can implement some, some ideas and some programs and some things in Milledgeville, and us having been known as a center for mental health throughout a good 150-plus years, and then I think other communities throughout the state will probably take a notice. And it's a good place to pick to, to start this. Looking forward to seeing what, what comes from this. Very good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, ladies, as I said, y'all are welcome to stay and hear us discuss the budget, or if you want to go, we're okay with that, too. But thank y'all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank y'all so much. And Janani and Carlencia, I'll be in touch with y'all in the next week or so.
Of course. Thank you. I really hope to see you all soon. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for budget discussion between now and the time that we have to break for our regular meeting at 6:30.
Okay. And you're turning it back over to me, but I think you have some presentations on here that you need to make.
Well, actually, I'll just, I'll run through what everyone got in an email from me about, I don't know, around 8 o'clock or so last night, as well as hard copies that were in your book. One of the things I wanted to, to make sure that you all had was last Tuesday night, y'all had the opportunity to hear from, from the department heads who had asked for additional personnel or who had asked for salary increases for their personnel. And I wanted to give you some indication about what, if, if what was requested, 100% of what was requested was funded, what that would be dollar-wise. And that's what I did in the first part of the email that I sent you all last night. And then in the second part, I know in, in previous budget discussions, the question often comes up, the, of the number, or the question is asked, "How many positions do we have that are approved positions that are not currently filled?" I have shared with y'all from day one of me having the opportunity to be a part of the budget process with the city, that I have no intentions of keeping positions on the books if it looks like we're not going to need them, just as a way to, to have additional monies in the budget. So the second piece of information that I shared with you in the email that I sent out last night was the open and unadvertised approved positions. And of course, I also included the approved positions from the 2021, 2020, 2021 budget. So I wanted you to see the positions that are currently in the budget that have not been advertised and are currently open. The city planner and public relations office positions that are listed there are some that I had talked to you about, the possibility of some reclassification of positions back in February and how we might utilize some of those monies there. And I think we still have some more to do. And I think we still have some more discussion to have about that. And so I left those positions in at least for the remainder of this fiscal year. The Accounting Manager position is a position that we fully intend to fill, but I had left open this year in case we needed to rely on some of those funds, based on not really knowing what COVID revenue was gonna do. Code Enforcement Officer will actually be advertised the first of next week with some changes from what it had previously been. The Chief Mechanic actually just came open about 30 days ago due to a retirement. And then, I'm not real sure why that Crew Leader in Cemeteries and Parks has not yet been advertised, but those are the ones that are currently open, that have not been advertised, and the funding associated with those. The only other thing that I will draw your attention to before I answer any questions that you have, or before we get started on discussion, is the way the salary compensation or the compensation packages for all of these positions was figured includes the first amount in the pay scale, or Level A in the pay scale, based on the scale that that particular job is associated with in the approved positions. Of course, 7.65% is added for FICA and FICA Med, which is the city's part of that. We are one of the few government entities anywhere in the state and probably anywhere in the nation that pays 100% of the pension for our employees. And so that is 15% of their salary. And then, while it's a large number, we have to assume that anyone who is hired may want the family insurance coverage, and so the cost of that family insurance coverage is added to that figure. So, as you're looking at compensation packages for each employee, you've got salary plus the 7.65% for FICA, FICA Med, 15% for pension contribution, and then the figure for assuming a family coverage for insurance. The family coverage for insurance figure is the figure that has the potential to change, depending on where the particular individual is that's hired, in terms of their family and the others that they have to provide for in their household. So we figure that as a maximum, and then if we can back off of that figure some, we will. I will just simply say to you, as my last comment on this, we don't really have enough information to know yet. If we have a budget work session, call Budget Work Session next week. I may have some more information by then, not real sure. But we are waiting on guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department on ways that our American Rescue Plan Act funds can be expended. We may be able to expend some of that money on some of the personnel in the emergency response areas. But I would caution you, if we look at doing that, that is not sustainable money. We would have it most likely for a maximum of two years unless the legislation changed. And so if we did wind up using some of those funds to hire additional people or to provide salary increases for emergency responders, we would have to be in a position or have to figure out a way, most likely within two years from this point, to figure out how to sustain that. So, with that information provided to you, I will take any questions that you all have or be involved in the discussion between you all as you would like for me to.
So, the open and unadvertised approved positions, the City Planner, did we not talk about doing away with that as a whole, or?
We talked about doing away with it with the reclassification of positions that I talked to you all about in February, but since that did not occur, I did not do away with it in this fiscal year budget.
I guess I also want to know about the Public Relations Officer.
That is a position that initially was in the Police Department, and when Felicia left, that position reverted back to the executive level budget, and that was also set aside for part of that reclassification that we discussed because one of the reclassifications involved someone taking that particular role, but not, obviously not taking all of that money. I mean, when we looked at the reclassifications, the compensation packages that you see for City Planner and Public Relations Officer, only about 25% of that was gonna be utilized with the reclassifications.
I'm like the mayor, though. I thought that we discussed it just going away with the position period that said it wasn't connected to the reclassification. I thought we just talked about the fact that we really didn't need that position anymore.
Well, that, the Public Relations Officer, the City Planner. Oops, I think we lost her.
I believe she was talking about the City Planner. And also...
Well, if you don't have that City Planner role, you have no one in the city doing economic development for the city.
Okay, so we still have one City Planner, right, which is Ms. Melvin?
That is correct.
And so what is... You all do, she did the what, administrative side, you did the economic development side of it.
The economic development was being done when I was in the City Planner role, through that position. I think we got Ms. Schinolster back. We got you back, Ms. Schinolster?
Okay. I don't know what happened there, but it just went, I guess that's the tragedy of being on the road. But I did hear some of what you said, not all of it.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, she said she heard some of what you said, not all of it.
I mentioned that that particular City Planner role was the one that was responsible for economic development. And with the exception of me being involved in it occasionally as City Manager, there was not anyone actively working economic development for the city at this point in time, anywhere outside of downtown. We have, we have an individual filling a fair amount of the responsibilities that were associated, that I want from a Public Relations Officer. That mainly deals with being able to get information out to the media when we need to, both positive information and emergency information. And we do have someone who is doing that. It has been additional work on them, but they have stepped up to the plate and been doing it without any additional money. But we are, we are able to get that done without it being part of that position and without filling that position.
Well, you don't have any current level staff that can do that without it having to be an entirely additional person. I think that piece of that, I'm not doing a whole lot of things. I'm trying to understand how difficult it would be for them to start working on Public Relations, especially if they're familiar with it.
We have someone doing Public Relations, but it is in addition to the rest of their job. And I have been very clear with y'all, that we have a disagreement on if you ask people to do additional work, you should give them additional compensation. But this person has stepped up to do the things that I have asked him to do from the Public Relations Officer standpoint without that additional compensation, so.
Is there someone in City Hall that we're talking about? Ms. Hilsen?
We are talking about Dina Thornton that works with Main Street.
Well, she's the only one that can do Public Relations that works with the city?
She is the only one that can do it and do it as well as it's being done right now, in my opinion.
But, I mean, when I see what she's doing just Facebook, right?
Well, we're doing Facebook. Ms. Hilsen is responsible for posting stuff on the web, but Ms. Thornton and Ms. Shulte both can do that. If we cannot access Ms. Hilsen, we also have media contact lists when information needs to be sent out to the media. And Ms. Thornton is doing all of the ad development for anything that we do for the city right now. An example of that is, I contacted her yesterday and asked her about putting together an ad for the graduation piece that's gonna be in the Union Recorder congratulating the 2021 graduates from Mayor and Council. I asked her about that at 8:30, and I had it at 11 o'clock yesterday morning, so. But that is, that is outside. She does some design work as part of her work for Main Street, but the design work that we've asked her to do for the city is in addition.
And you're saying that no one, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but she does it well, but I mean, that was your choice to start asking her to do it because she had staff there that could possibly have done the same thing, but you made the choice to ask her to do it.
What other staff could have possibly done the same thing?
I mean, I'm just saying, you don't have staff that can do that without having to ask her to do it, and then she needs additional money?
Not with the design experience that she has, no, ma'am.
Let me ask a question. So going back, pre yourself and I, or, let me, I guess this is a question probably more so for somebody on council, who did ads, the design for ads and all that before, I'll say, going back at least the first part of my administration, who was responsible for getting ads, whenever you all did designs or whatever that you put in the paper?
We had, Felicia was the only one that really helped with that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who was doing it.
I don't, I don't recall.
Prior to, prior to her, I think maybe a lot of it was quite frankly being done by the Union Recorder when they sold the ad, Mayor.
One thing I want to clarify, and that is that whoever ends up doing this is not a full-time position by any stretch, and that's not anybody moving into this position or anything of that nature. It's, what you have indicated to us, I believe, is that this is in addition to what these individuals are already doing. And that's what, what you came to us about, and that was some of these individuals doing some other things, and you wanted to go ahead and compensate them for that. And then some of us, myself included, were a little concerned about compensating somebody for something when you asked them to do it, as opposed to asking them to do something, seeing what you're getting, and then talk about any further compensation. But I don't think any of that conversation involved filling that Public Relations Officer or the City Planner position. Did it not?
That is correct. You're exactly right. And the main reason I have these two positions on this list is because in the past, we've had questions about positions that were open that had not been advertised or had not been filled. And that's the reason all of these positions under Number Two, and this information is available. But you're right, that is, that is exactly correct. And that would be, that will be some money that can revert back to the 2021 budget that, 2021, 2022 budget that is not, that is not in the budget information that you have at this point in time.
Well, here's my problem with that, because if we start, like, every time we ask an employee to do something, and we start providing compensation, you know what a can of worms that's gonna open up? Because you always really have someone that works with the border department that has been given additional duties after the things that she doesn't normally do. Nobody put her on a shift to get salary increases. I mean, there are several employees that do things that they are asked to do. And if we start compensating one, we're gonna get a discrimination lawsuit or something because we're discriminating against the others that we ask to do something that's outside of their regular job duty. So, you know, when you have that line in your job, do you think that any other duty that may be deemed necessary, then that falls up, would you ask them to do additional things, it falls up under that category? But if we start compensating people for every little thing that we ask them to do, we're gonna get in a world of trouble.
If I may, it seems to me that there is a value assigned to having this work done, and the value assigned to having this work done is the salary and benefits that go along with that position. Now, if this work has value, and it is being done, whether it is being done as additional work by someone who is already on staff, or if it is done by an individual hired to fill that position, there is value to that work. And the savings for the city should be somewhere between what we value that entire position at and where that person sits who is already doing that work. I think that somewhere between the two, there should be compensation for work that an individual does. I am of like mind with the City Manager here on this point. And Ms. Schinolster, I understand your concern, but I also believe that this is why we do this the correct way, by reclassifying a position and including these duties to, in order to make it commiserate with the pay increase that comes along with it. The duties and responsibilities should match the compensation. But there is value to the work that is being done. We've been able to define that value, and if we can come in below the value of that entire additional personnel and position, then that's a savings for the city to get a job done that needs to be done. And this is not the type of work that just anyone can step into. Coming out of the world of media and communications, mass communications, I can assure you that this is not something that just anyone can do. These are qualified skills. These are particular skills that have to be developed, and consistency is key here. You know, we have a brand that we, that we want people to identify our city with, and having that in the hands of a competent professional who has this type of experience, who has this skill set, has value in and of itself. And I would, I would encourage you all to just keep that in mind.
And I don't want to get bogged down with the, with the reclassification conversation and piece again. That was not my purpose for putting these, these two positions in there. My purpose was just so that you could see what they, what they were. I really see the reclassification as being something separate from setting the budget, and then we can come back and have this reclassification conversation later. And if the money is available at that point in time for additional compensation based on that reclassification, we can have that conversation. But you all were, and I don't mean this, I don't mean this as pointed as it's gonna come out, I'm just gonna simply say, you all were very clear with me when we had the reclassification conversation in February, that you all were not ready to move forward with that at that point in time. And I was fine with that, and that's the reason I didn't move forward with it. I didn't see the need for what was remaining in the current budget to go through a budget amendment and pull these positions out, just for the few months that was left in the, in the current budget year. But these positions are not there to rehash the reclassification conversation again. They are there just simply to let you know that they are positions that are in the budget that have not been filled and have not been advertised. Because I remember when we went through our first budget that I was helping with, that was one of the very specific questions that Mr. was one of the very specific questions that Mr. Mullins asked, was what positions are in the budget that have not been filled, and most likely will not be advertised, so I wanted to be able to communicate that information to y'all. So, we can have the reclassification conversation later, let's, let's don't get bogged down on the, on the budget piece for that, and, and I think I may have created that bog by putting these on there, but I just wanted you all to see that those were in the current budget. I didn't see the need to do a budget amendment for the four months or so that was left in the budget year to pull these out, but we can certainly pull them out in the 2021, 2022 budget, and once the reclassification happens, if it does, at that point in time, we can then determine if the additional, if the money is there for any additional compensation that y'all would be willing to approve, so.
Let me ask a question too, since, and I know we're moving on, but under these, the positions that we talked about, maybe asking some particular department heads or staff, remember how you were going to say, doing some, changing them over, or moving them up with no compensations, because I didn't see that listed either, do you have that listed?
I do not have them on here, I only put positions on here that were associated with increased cost. And I think, I think you may be talking about the, the, the First Lieutenant position that the fire department asked about?
No, I'm talking about the ones we talked about with the, the one you wanted to maybe change the name, tweak the name a little bit, but you wanted to speak with...
That was part of the reclassification conversation that we had in February.
Right, right, but I'm saying, I didn't see any of that on, in the budget itself, even though they're not going to get a pay increase, I didn't see it listed on our budget.
It is not listed in the budget, because for the position that I believe you're talking about, you all will have to approve a new job description, because that job has not existed before now.
Right, because we were waiting on you to get us job description, did you?
Which I gave you during the reclassification conversation.
We have so much, okay, you sure did.
We do have so much.
Hank, could you please get that information back to us again?
I will, yes sir, I absolutely will.
I think that would be helpful.
Let me, let me address the, the First Lieutenant positions with the fire department I was talking about, because they were in the presentation that I initially did to y'all. Chief Collier and I are actually talking about maybe doing that with, with filling some additional captain slots as opposed to First Lieutenant. I shared with him that I had some concerns with the First Lieutenant position, because it seemed very similar to the senior sergeant position that we had some time back, that we did away with and moved everybody up to lieutenant from. So, what I shared with him was for he and I to have a conversation, to look at the possibility of moving those First Lieutenants, who are the people who basically are in charge at Station Two, or are in charge at Station One, if the battalion chief happens to be out that day, to look at the possibility of, of, of moving some people into some captain slots that are a position that has already been approved. A First Lieutenant position would have to be approved by y'all as, with a new job description, but the captain's position is already approved, and we would just need to come to y'all and request some additional positions in that particular job description, and I felt like that would make it a little bit cleaner.
Is that with, what you're suggesting, is that with an increase, or?
It is, he did not request an increase in it initially.
Because I'm...
I think one will come, quite frankly, but it was not, it was not in the initial request.
And I guess I kind of asked that based on, you know, as you said, we went back to our initial conversation, Mr. Mullins raised some concern about being top-heavy, and so, even if we, you're moving them from lieutenant to captain, that is a, some type pay incentive is going to be in that, I would assume, because that's not like, I'm going to give you an prime example, when I worked at the Department of Corrections, if I was acting lieutenant, okay, under their guidelines, I got that 3% increase, but when I was no longer acting, I went back down to my regular pay scale. So, I guess that's what I'm asking, is it's going to be a pay differential, and are we still going to balance out and, you know, and watching how we're top-heavy at the same time, and kind of do some of the things as we're looking at, I guess?
We, we do not, we do not have anything at this point in time that has a pay differential in it for, for temporary assignments. I think I answered your question there.
Yes, you did, you did, I get, I get what you're saying, okay. Was it anything, Dr. Lee want to, to comment, and we're going to let her comment right quick and they'll, it's right at time, go ahead, Dr. Lee.
I have a couple of questions, but I will just call you and ask you about them since it is 6:30, okay?
Okay, okay, I need one, I do need to ask y'all one question, is my assumption correct that we will be, we will need to have a called budget work session next Tuesday at 5:30?
We definitely do.
Okay.
The way we do nothing but the budget.
Right, that's right, that's exactly right, that'll be all that we do at that meeting, so, Bo, we can set that up in the morning.
And Mrs. Griffin, I, I know you said you had things moved out until June, I would suggest that for the work session, until we finish the budget, or what discussions, who is, if you can kind of maybe eliminate some of the people you already, or reschedule them until we can...
I, I don't have anybody else, anybody else scheduled for any of our work sessions, except budget.
Okay, sounds good, okay.
Anybody or anything scheduled except budget.
Sounds good, sounds good, okay. That being all, no other questions or anything else to discuss, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move?
You have that, Mr. DeNusa?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, meeting adjourned.